Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In vocation by Grace Baptist Church.
Shall we pray? Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the opportunity we have to live in a great land, land that offers opportunities for self-government. Lord, we're approaching the anniversary of our independence, and we need to be reminded that along with the independence comes great responsibilities. And so, Lord, I pray that we would use the freedom that we have wisely. I pray that you would direct in the affairs of this nation and even in this town that the decisions that are made would be the right decisions that would ultimately that you'd be glorified in all that is done. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Sabers.
Here.
Goldammer.
Here.
Dozier.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Matty.
Here.
Charks.
Here.
Here. Hey, we have a quorum. I want to point out, we're going to move one item, item 27. We're going to move up to you after citizens' input before we start the Board of Adjustment. So, item 27, the honorary naming will be moved up. Okay? Roll call, or, excuse me, approval of consent agenda items. Items appearing on consent agenda may be removed by City Council member for discussion of beginning of formal agenda items. Is there anything you wish to remove? Any discussion?
Move to broom.
Motion by Mr. McCarty. Say by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody now wish to address the consent agenda items? Okay, roll call, please.
Dozier.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Matty.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens' input. If you need to address the mayor, members of city council on item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken. Does anybody wish to address council?
I do want to start here. Mitchell had a really good, busy weekend bringing in outside of events. Harp Sports Shop, Bryan Wilson had their 10U, 12U, if you went by Saturday, all the diamonds were full, small diamonds. The tennis courts were full. They had their annual Mitchell Tennis Classic out here that they've had for years. And then, the golf course had a veterans fundraiser. They're raising money for new bathrooms at the Serviceman's Cemetery. And they raised $14,000 yesterday, most of it through donations at the golf course. All of our facilities were busy and a lot of people in town.
Okay. Anybody else wish to address council?
I have, uh...
Go ahead.
Just two things. One, Happy Father's Day weekend, anyone that obviously is a parent. Appreciate all that you do to help raise and steer our kids in the right direction. But then also, this weekend, I had the opportunity to go out to the new rodeo grounds and kind of look around out there. And what they have built out there and done is pretty incredible. I look forward to the rodeo in July. Hope that you have the opportunity to get out to see that, both that rodeo and then also the one that's coming up here in June. So, rodeo's alive and well in Mitchell, and I think that's really good to see. So, look forward to both events being successful for our town.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I was gone for a couple of weeks and came back and was so excited to see that Third is, the intersection at Third is open. Just wondered where we're at, what's on tap for the rest of the summer? Do we have any, do we have time to accomplish some more great things?
Yep, so ahead of schedule. They still need to finish the plantings and a few other of the landscaping items there. They do plan to start the railroad area in August. And hopefully, that'll follow roughly the same month to two-month timeline, depending how things go.
Fantastic, beautiful.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Valley?
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Mike Valley. And unless a special meeting is called, I believe this is the last city council meeting that Mayor Everson will be presiding over.
It is.
So, tonight, I just want to thank Mayor Everson for his service and his perseverance as mayor since 2018. And there are five initiatives that I just want to mention. Number one, you put a spotlight on the phosphorus-driven algae and resulting cyanobacteria microsystems problem that closes our largest park, Lake Mitchell, and then sought professional environmental engineering solutions. First of all, even though it was expensive, you embraced their recommendations and sought the solution for dredging and biologically tying up the phosphorus. And secondly, placing wetlands and sediment ponds upstream in the Firesteel Watershed. Secondly, the Kelly property, which was purchased, is now resulting in wetlands and sediment ponds construction, which will start the next month. They're talking now probably mid to late July. And the third thing is, a newly purchased Firesteel Creek Kiner property is under study to accomplish the same result. Number two, like a person, the city cannot live long without sufficient potable water, nor does it have any hope of growing without plenty of potable water. In 2018, Mitchell been expanding, began exceeding its water, its daily water capacity from BY Rural Water. You, the mayor, advocated for a secondary source of water. And now, pre-construction work has started on a new secondary water source from Randall Community Rural Water District, and will also bring Missouri River Water to Mitchell. Number three, a new water storage facility is currently about 80% complete and will hold 2.5 million gallons, approximately a full-day supply in one tank. Number four, in addition, once you use that water, it must be treated. And the mayor pushed for the improvement and increased capacity of our city's wastewater treatment facilities. That will be completed this fall. Thank you. A new recycling building to increase the efficiency and lower cost before being bundled and shipped will be built on-site at the landfill. And more productive, the more productive our recycling, the longer our landfill lasts. Thank you. These are just some of the items that were accomplished under your mayor, and I just wanted to say thank you. And they are all items that look to our future growth as a community so that we can grow and expand. Now, I don't want you to get too big ahead here, mayor. I did not always agree with you. But then, no two people always agree on everything anyway. And it's never easy to propose and make large-scale changes for the future, as there are many Monday-morning quarterbacks out there that want to second-guess your actions. But unlike a real quarterback, Monday-morning quarterbacks don't have to take the snap and watch Levin, usually larger men, try and grind you into the ground. And so, it's sometimes it's like that in politics. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for taking the field and making Mitchell's future brighter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It wasn't all me. I had... I appreciate the words, but it wasn't all me. I have great staff, great department heads, great city workers. They made it all come together, and I appreciate what they've done the last six years. So, thank you. Anybody else wish to address council?
Yeah, I'd like to pigtail off that, what Mike said. I've been president with Mayor Everson for the last five years, and I, we've, I think we've accomplished a lot in the last five years. I'd like to thank, I call him Bob, Mayor Everson, for everything that he's done for the last six years as the mayor. We've had our ups and downs, but we've been friends for 40 years, and I think we'll continue to be friends. And I wish you the best, and thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I was gonna just chime in a little bit, too, and obviously, being one of the elder statesmen's here, I've been around a while. I would say that probably, and council years were the same age, Marty. But, but I truly, Bob, from, again, not two people are ever going to agree on everything. And that's, that's just fact of life. And especially when you're in city politics, you're always going to have somebody that's going to question or wonder why. But the one thing that I know, when you broke, when you came in six years ago, and I've known you for a long time, and I knew you were going to bring professionalism to City Hall. And that, I do thank you very much for that, Bob.
Thank you.
And, you know, I remember the first thing that, one of the first things that Bob did, and, and it seems small, and I'm going to mention a couple of small things, but in the community, they're huge, is you opened up the Eighth Street Drop Site or the Compost. It used to be under lock and key whenever, whenever we used to shut that down, and you said, "Let's open it up. We've got, we've got the camera there, and we don't have hardly any issues or problems." But that meant a lot for the people in the city, because sometimes you get done at 10 o'clock at night mowing grass, and you're going to work the next day. So, that, that was something that very much appreciated. You, our bike paths are better today as a result of you. Our sidewalks are better. And Main Street, you've done a lot of work on pulling some items together on Main, including our plaza, which, which is amazing. And the last thing I want to mention that people really don't understand or know, and no reason why they would, because you wouldn't brag about it, is you, you as an engineer, did a lot of work for the city that was not built. And I know you did. And that, we very much appreciate your, your help that, now, now we might get a bill, I guess.
No, you're not going to get a bill. I appreciate it, thank you.
So, all those things, all those things, Bob, it's, it's very much appreciated, and sometimes it's, it's a thankless job, and we all know it. But in all reality, you're leaving this city a lot better than you found it.
Yeah, thank you. But like I said, I had a lot of help from staff and department heads, and I give them credit as well. Without them, you know, it might not have gotten nearly what I got done done. So, I really appreciate it. Mr. Kipas, you want to talk?
Can I, can I just finish up here real quick with, with what we're doing? Obviously, I was myself. Want him to go?
No, go ahead.
What's your topic?
I'm going to thank the mayor.
You go. You go. I'll finish.
Okay. My name is Joe Kipas, and I'm speaking for Friends of the Firesteel tonight. So, first of all, Mayor Bob, thank you for your work and your commitment towards finding an engineered solution for a complex problem. And for us at Friends of the Firesteel, that was the key that we were trying to find and trying to get in place so we could get to the very source of our, our lake problems. And so, I believe that we're on our way. Obviously, we're not there, but you've taken us a long ways to getting there, and, and thank you for that. And the second part of this, we've got a long ways to go, and, and I'd like to congratulate Jordan on his victory, and I'm looking forward to Friends of the Firesteel working with you in the next three years. So, Bob, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Like I said, I had a lot of good staff working for me, so... Anybody else? Okay.
I'll go ahead. Marty, you already forgot about me. I already forgot. Once again, just echoing what everybody has said tonight, working with, obviously, I think you're my fifth mayor, sixth to come, been here for quite some years and worked with some great mayors over those years, but you're definitely leaving us on a great positive note. We've got a lot of things started. Looking forward to working with the council and the new mayor on continuing forward with what you've put in place, which we all just got done pointing all those out. But you really got us in a positive way where we can grow over the next few years and keep prospering for the city of Mitchell and the citizens. So, I really do thank all your years you gave us service for on the last six years. And on that note, usually, you're the one that gets to tell everybody to stand up, but I'm going to have you stand up for me, mayor, if you will. I'd like to present you with a token in honor and a key to the city of Mitchell.
All right, everybody sit down. I appreciate...
Mike wanted to get you a gold chain, but please do it.
I appreciate it, but like I said, it wasn't all me. I had great staff, and I got to give credit to them, so I appreciate that. Anybody else wish to address council? Okay, we'll move on to item 27. We're going to move up to this spot now. I'm honored. Action to approve resolution, R. 202443, resolution approving the honorific naming of city land. So, it's my honor to bring forward to the council the proposal to name a park after John and Linda McCloud. As you know, I spent 13 years on the Park and Rec Board back in the early 2000s. Mr. McCloud was actually working on trees and things back then. We fielded a lot of complaints back in those days. He slowed down a little bit, but he picked it up here recently again, and he has done a lot to improve the lands around Lake Mitchell. Park and Rec has helped out with some of the removal of, of the debris, but we really appreciate what you've done, Mr. McCloud and Mrs. McCloud, bringing forward a group of people that are willing to go out there and volunteer their time and put forth a lot of effort to make our lake a better place. One of, a couple of other things he's already done, I don't know if you are aware of, but he came forward and he said, "I would like to replace the siding on the day camp." And he has done so. He put, I think he put a new roof on that as well, is that right? Mr. McCauley, you and Linda, come up here to the podium, would you please? So, he, he's redone the siding and painted the day camp, correct? Yep. Did you put a new roof on that?
No, no new roof.
No new roof, okay. And you're doing, working on the sportsman's club?
Yeah, sportsman's club.
Right now?
Residing should start tomorrow.
Right, okay.
Yep.
One of the things that he has done is he cleared out, if you've been out to the, what we call the old boat ramp, the one that's between the sportsman's club and the Indian Village, they cleared a lot of debris and trees out of there and made it a much nicer place. There's actually going to be a beach there that people can use. Once we get going here, there will be grass planted there to, to make a green area. We will have a shelter there. That's planned to be built there. The parking lot's going to get paved. And what I would like to do is name that area you see in red, the John and Linda McCloud Park. So, I'm going to ask council's approval of that tonight through this resolution. I thank you very much for all you've done. I like what we've seen go on at Lake Mitchell, and I hope you can continue to work out there. So, thank you.
You know, I just have to say, the fact that you have done what you've done with no expectation of, you know, like recognition, this was all done because you love our community. And I can't thank you enough personally for the, your investment, not just of your resources, but the man, I mean, the day that you took me around to show me, I just was so impressed with what you guys have accomplished together and, and with your great team that you have too. So, I am just honored to move approval of this resolution, 2024-43.
Okay, we have motion by Mrs. Charks.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Smith.
And I would like to maybe have John just kind of explain a little bit. You've been on the lake a long, long time, and you, and that's, that's part, that's part of your family, I think. And, and you, you really want to have other people access the lake like you did when you were growing up. And, and there's some things that you've done, and, and you've taken some trees out, but you planted a lot of trees, too. So, maybe you can just give us a little synopsis and then maybe introduce some of the people, or at least have them stand up so we can recognize them, too, because you've got quite a crew.
I see that. Well, thank you for that. And, but yeah, the, I guess, you know, kind of started more as an exercise program when it first started, and we just started doing work out there, but it definitely turned into a love of, of getting the public use areas fixed up. And by that, we want the, the people in Mitchell to be able to come out and use the lake, picnics, fishing, shore fishing, whatever it is. And so, that's the areas that we've concentrated the most on, getting the views back out. Big thing was getting the buckthorn out and the, and the dead trees and getting grasses planted. We committed to three years, once we get an area done. So, we've got a few years left to just try to, to, you know, help the city get those areas to where they're easy to maintain and that we don't go backwards on these things in the future. So, it, it definitely has been, you know, pretty fun. There's no doubt about that. It's been a lot of work. She's had to put up with a lot. Me talking about it all the time.
Who was the foreman, you or her?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I'm the foreman. At least, that's what she tells me. Yeah, I'd really like to thank Mayor Bob for, you know, making it easy to, to go do this, be able to work with him, be able to come in and talk into him. Bob and Kevin, we got to go around the lake, you know, once a month, check out areas, decide what was going to happen to the areas. So, I really appreciate being able to do that and, and, you know, keep the city involved with what's going on. And then, the more we looked at the buildings, I grew up in Kipas Bay. Joe was here, his grandfather, of course, that's what it's named after. And so, I got a lot of feelings towards Kipas Bay. So, that's why we kind of decided to hit those two areas first, as far as the buildings, you know, get them fixed up. I think you'll see a real change in the sportsman's club. That was overdue. It was pretty rough when we tore the siding off, so there had to be a little bit of work done before we got going on the siding. But we've got a, a good crew out there working, Justin Young Construction's doing all the work. Our volunteers are tore off the siding, they're, they're doing all the painting. I would like to have our volunteers stand up. I know they're all here, or a lot of them, so let's stand up. I'm not going to introduce them all. I couldn't have done it without them. They definitely, we get a lot of work done, you know. I think we got 12 total. We usually have eight or 10 there when we're working.
You have planted a lot of new trees out around the lake as well.
Yeah, we've put, yeah, I think we've gotten 35 new trees in, but we've got more to go in, especially in that area right there. We've saved a bunch of bigger ones to go into there, so we'll have, once that gets done, because there'll be, you know, there'll have to be quite a bit of changing around, and we'd like to get the trees back in that area, because more had to come out of there because of that slew area, you know. So, it worked out pretty good. So, other than that, it's, it's been good. So, I would like to say one thing, though, since it was Father's Day yesterday, I would like to dedicate this thing to my dad, you know, so he loved Lake Mitchell.
Okay.
All right.
All right, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carried. Congratulations, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
I, I do want to thank all the volunteers that helped with that as well. You've done, made great strides out there and made it quite a place to be able to go out and use the, the shore around Lake Mitchell again. So, thank you all. Okay, with that, we'll go back online. Entertainer motion to recess and sit as board of adjustment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer.
Second.
Say by Mrs. Charks. Discussion. All those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carried. Hearing an action on the application for Zion Lutheran Church variance permit. Zion Lutheran Church has applied for variance permit for maximum total square foot of signage of 40 square feet versus 16 square feet. This is located at 601, 605, and 611 East Fourth Avenue, 620 East Third Avenue is existing church address. Legally described as lots 5 through 7 block 32 Cooley and currency addition. City of Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota said property zone R2, single family. Mr. Genegas?
Mr. Mayor, council, this was published in the paper. Neighbors were notified, signed posted. There were two letters returned in favor, one returned opposed to the sign. Comments on that were, they believed it was going to go on Fourth, and they didn't want it on Fourth Avenue. This sign will actually go on Burr Street instead of Fourth Avenue. They also had some concerns about the construction that's been ongoing with some holes that have been created and things like that, not necessarily the sign itself. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this, 5, 1 with 1 absent. Discussion during this, the existing monument sign to the south side of the alley will be removed, and I believe I do have a picture of what the new sign would be if you scroll down a little bit on that one. Stephanie?
Yeah.
The GIS one, yep, on the second page. So, it'll be a post there instead of the monument sign. View triangle, site triangle will be probably better when you're looking out from the alley that way. I can answer any questions that you have for me.
Move to broom.
Motion by Mr. McCarty.
Second.
Say by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody now wish to address this? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carried. Hearing an action on the application for Terry Reed Belt variance permit. Terry Reed Belt has applied for variance permit for accessory buildings of 2,640 square feet versus 2,000 square feet to build a new accessory building of 1,440 square feet. This is located in the lot between 84 and 892 South Harmon Drive, legally described as Lot 2, Block 4, Indian Head, second addition. City of Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota said property zone RL Lake Presidential. Mr. Genegas?
Mr. Mayor, council, neighbors were notified, published in the official newspaper, signed posted. There were three letters returned in favor of this. Planning Commission recommended approval of this, 6, 0 with 1 absent. Applicant would like to remove the southern shed on his property and build a new shed there that is your blue outline. It's going to have some higher sidewalls and bigger overall square footage so he can park his camper in there and some other items for storage there. He's at, he's here. If you have any questions for him, I can answer any questions you have for me.
Motion to move. Motion by Mr. Sabers.
Second.
Say by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody now wish to address this one? All those favor the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carried. Hearing an action on the application for Arlen Shoe Condition Use Permit. Arlen Shoe has applied for condition use permit for self-storage, self-service storage facility with varying apartment sizes located at 1910 North Foster Street, legally described as the west 425 feet to the north 240 feet, 240.42 feet of Lot 82, except south 105 feet, all in Skyline Estates in the northwest corner of Section 14 Township 103 North Main 60 West of the 5th Primary in Davis County, South Dakota. Said property is owned R4, high density. Mr. Genegas?
Mr. Mayor, council, signs posted, neighbors were notified, published in the official paper. There were no letters returned for this in favor or opposed. Planning Commission recommended approval of this, 6, 0 with 1 absent. Applicant came in to get a building permit for a new building that he's moving from Dakota Fest to this location. After looking at the overall scope of work at that location, there's no primary use in R4, so it's determined storage units are what he's using them for already, so he should have a conditional use for that. The initial thing was it'd be total square footage over 2,000 square feet in R4 for accessory buildings, but you have to have a primary to have an accessory. So, storage units don't have a limit for total square footage. It goes by lot area being used by those structures, and he's well underneath that limit. There is some floodplain in this area, so he is working with the county to get a floodplain approval. For that, he'll have to do a free board for his slab that's there outside of the floodplain then. I can answer any questions you have, or he's also here for any questions.
Move to broom.
Motion by Mr. McCarty. Second by Mr. Sabers. Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address this one? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Action to set the date for board of adjustment, hearing 7/1/24. Ford Towsland has applied for variance permit for accessory buildings of 2640 square feet versus 2,000 square feet to build a new accessory building of 1,440 square feet. This is located at 1312 Roland Lane, legally described as lot three, block four, fire steel height subdivision, City of Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota.
Move to set the date.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Discussion. Anybody know who I should address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Action to set the date for board of adjustment, hearing 070124. Mike Royston has applied for variance permit for a front yard setback of 17 feet versus 25 feet to build a 16-foot by 26-foot attached garage. This is located 412 South Iowa Street, legally described as lot 9A and south 20 feet of lot 10A, block 22, railroad addition, City of Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota said property is owned R2, single family.
Move to set the date.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Action to set the date for board of adjustment, hearing 070124. Angie Moon has applied for disuse permit to operate a family residential daycare located at 1024 Palmer Place, legally described as lot two and west 13 feet of lot three, block one, Cedar Heights subdivision, City of Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota said property is owned R2, single family.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Entertainer motion, board of adjustment to adjourn city council recomremeing regular session.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Charks. Second by Mr. Goldammer. Discussion. All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Hearing and action on the following alcohol license applications. On the application, Corn Palace Shriner Club for a special event liquor license located in Sonic Hall on July 6, 2024 for a wedding. Any, any issues, Mr. Coster?
Mayor and Council, we have no concerns and recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried on application to Corn Palace Shriner Club for special event liquor license located in Sonic Hall on July 27, 2024 for a fundraiser.
Recommend approval, sir.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address this one? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. On the application of Corn Palace Stampede, Inc. for a special event liquor license located at 6320 North Oldman Street on July 18 through 21st, 2024 for the Corn Palace Stampede Rodeo. Any issues, Mr. Coster?
Recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McArdle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldammer. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address this one? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Action to approve special event permit application for Mitchell Open Disc Golf Tournament on Saturday, July 20, 2024. Mr. Heath.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Aaron Heeb. The Mitchell Disc Golf Tournament is Saturday, July 20th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Dry Run Creek Disc Golf Course. The submitted special event permit application is requesting the closure of the Dry Run Creek Disc Golf Course from that timeframe, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, July 20th. Also, Kerry Mullenberg is requesting that the city council waive the Dry Run Creek Disc Golf Course closure fee of $300. Final approval of the submitted special event permit application will be contingent upon receipt of the certificate of liability insurance form prior to the day of the tournament. And last of all, staff recommends city council approval of the requested special event permit as outlined in the application.
Aaron, question for you. Have they gone to the Sports and Events Authority?
This is their first step. And then they're going to see if council waives the fee and then depending on that, then they were going to maybe reach out to the Sports and Events Authority and fill out a grant application.
Okay. That, that would be my preference. I don't know what everybody else is thinking. We, we do have costs in everything we do at the city. And that's, that's why we're collecting that fee. So, so it doesn't cost them anything, but it asks them to have an application. And Kevin, I know you sit on that, don't you? Yeah. You, you think this would be an event that they should go and, and then if they get turned down, then maybe we can, we can look at it. But you've, they've got a meeting coming up in July, right?
Yeah. Second Tuesday.
And when is, when is this event again?
July 20th.
Okay.
Till they have time.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, I'll recommend that to Kerry.
That'd be okay. Okay. I'll, I'll make that motion.
The motion.
To proceed with.
Without waiving the fee.
Without waiving the fee.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Smith.
My second.
Second by Mr. McArdle. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Action to approve special event permit application for the 40, 437 project on Saturday, September 21st, 2024. Mr. Heath.
Mayor and Council, Aaron Heeb again. The 437 project is Saturday, September 21st, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. The submitted special event permit application is requesting a parade permit with a PD escort. The 437 project is also requesting city council waive the special event permit fee because of non-profit and the impact their organization has on individuals and residents, not only in Mitchell, but throughout the state of South Dakota. I did want to share and be a little more specific with the escort route that they are requesting. So again, the 437 project will come through Mitchell here on Saturday, September 21st, around 2:00 p.m. They're going to come in from the north on Highway 37, making an hour-long stop at the Corn Palace. They request the escort. Once the runner turns onto Highway 37 and then travels south into Mitchell, from there, the runner will turn east on Seventh Avenue and then back south on Lawler Street, where they will park their RVs and SUVs in the coned areas on Lawler Street. And then after the completion of the event, the police escort will be needed as they leave the Corn Palace and take Lawler Street to First Avenue and then to Burr Street and then out east on Highway 38. The Corn Palace also suggested to use temporary cones to block off a few areas there on Lawler Street rather than doing a street closure for just an hour. And then those closures, or the coned areas are outlined on the attached map as well. And last of all, staff recommends city council approval of the requested special event permit as outlined in the application.
How much is their fee, Aaron? 300, too?
So it'd be 250 for a parade permit with an escort.
Did you want to speak, Mrs. Larson?
I'm just, I'm here to represent 437 project. I'm Lisa Larson. I'm one of the runners.
Come, come up here.
I'm excited to.
You're, you're broadcast out to the world, so they got to know who you are and what you say.
All right. I'm Lisa Larson. I'm one of the 12 runners that will be running across the state of South Dakota for the 437 project. It is in, in recognition and bringing awareness of suicide and mental health awareness. We run for four days straight, night and day, and we run all the way across from one border to the next. Last year, we raised $250,000 that we gave back to the Helpline Center. So we are asking for your permission to, again, proceed back into Mitchell like we did last year. Basically, it's the same route. It's just that you guys have another permits already going on or another event, so we can't go down Main Street and we have to go down Seventh Street instead. So I wish that you would agree to accept our request.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Larson?
You guys all want to run with me, right?
I don't even have good knees.
No, no, I knew, Barrington, I knew you did.
Mr. Goldammer's volunteering, right?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Anything else?
Have you gone to SEA for any funds?
No, I have not. No, we have done anything. I mean, I could probably go to Quality Homes.
Do you know him?
I do.
What did, what did we do last year for, for you, do you remember? You said we did this last year, I remember.
We, we've, this will be the third year that we proceeded.
What have we been doing?
I don't know what you did last year. I think Lexi was the one that represented last year, so I wasn't on the crew.
Anybody, yeah.
So I guess last year, again, like Ms. Larson said, it was the same, same idea, same format. It's just they went down Main Street. And we have, I believe Oktoberfest and the OutKast Car Show going on now, so we adjusted their route to turn on Seventh and then come down Lawler so they can still experience the Corn Palace and then get escorted out of town there.
In terms of the fee, did you have any record of us waiving that fee last year?
We just voted them in this year.
Correct.
Wasn't it?
Well, there is no fee connected, collected last year for it, no.
Yeah, we just voted those fees in six months ago, I think, for.
The parade fee we've had, we just haven't had a parking lot closure fee before. But the parade fee was previous.
That's what I was feeding off of if we charged last year for the parade fee, which we did not. Obviously, the last two years now.
Correct. There is nothing collected last year for it.
I'm fine with being consistent with prior years. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Smith. Second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address it?
No, but I do just want to acknowledge the importance of what you're doing and thank you for bringing awareness.
Yeah. Okay. All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Action to approve Cadwell Press Box contingency funding request. Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the Cadwell Press Box construction project is nearing completion. I paused for reaction. In addition to a slight cost overrun, there are two items listed on a change order request which need to be addressed. Number one, the removal of concrete steps at the top of the bleachers slash base of the press box. And two, installation of metal inserts within all of the structural steel roofing ridges where they arch up and return back down to the steel purlins, as numerous Pharaohs have found this to be delightful areas to build their nests, resulting in a nest directly over the bleachers. There's also some additional related design expense to be incurred. The total amount of funding requested is $16,257.82. Staff recommends approval.
So when we did the original funding for this, it was divided amongst different entities, Mitchell Baseball, I believe, I'm not sure, but am I correct that maybe Dakota Wesleyan participated in this project or not?
If they did, it was to a lesser extent, but I believe.
So I just am wondering if we're requesting for any contribution towards this extra $16,000 or if this is just something that the city will absorb.
We have not asked any additional funding from them.
I, I attended the amateur game last night and started at 5:00. And you guys did a very good job on designing this, Joel, because about over half of the, of the seating was in the shade. And even though it wasn't, obviously, yesterday was very comfortable, we all know what we've got with the state tournament in August. And, and so that, that's really going to turn out very nice.
I'd just like to say, I, I can't take credit for that. Silverella designed, designed that, along with the Park Department and a few other community stakeholders. So kudos to them. I'm just involved in the process. But thank you.
They did model it with their Revit program to see where the shade was, so they made sure they had a, a great portion of seating covered. So they did a good job.
Yeah, very good job.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McArdle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Action to approve the purchase of two Ford Transit vans from South Dakota Federal Surplus. Now, Mrs. Pickett went home ill today, so she's not here. Stephanie and I are going to stumble through this. She was able to find two vans in surplus that she could purchase for less cost than what she was able to buy the van she was looking at. Is that?
Yeah. So she was planning on putting this in the budget in, for 2025. Became aware of two slightly used ones available through federal surplus and hereon. They have been driven and inspected and they're in good condition. She did verify with State that she could use her federal grant dollars for the match required. So they will pay for 80% of the cost and then the remaining, whoops, I'm on the wrong one. Oh, that's okay. I was talking from memory there. That's pretty good. So as you can see here, the total cost is somewhere in here. Oh, yeah. Ninety, what? Our cost is $9,620, but the total cost of the project for both of them is $48,100. The $9,620, we, Jessica and I did go through and look at how much will be left in her group insurance line of the Palace Transit budget. And she'll have sufficient funds in there to cover that. So it won't require contingency. We'll just have to do a supplement of the grant when we receive those funds. Jessica felt that it was a great opportunity to get some, a good value on two vans compared to buying them new in next year's budget. And she did recommend approval of the request.
Will we be surplusing to them?
That's a good question. I don't, I think they were new that they were adding in order to have alternate transportation, but I can't.
I think you're right.
I think that that was the case. That's why they were going to add it next year.
They're not replacing, these are supplementing, so she doesn't have to use big vans, if I'm not mistaken.
But we'll have Jessica follow up with everyone. Like the mayor said, she did have to go home sick today. So I said I would step in as much as I could for her today.
I'd say if you get two vans for 9,600 bucks, I'll make approval for that.
Making a motion?
Yep.
Motion by Mr. McArdle.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion. Anybody else, you guys want to address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Action to approve agreement 8/202425 for tornado room at Lake Mitchell Campground Design Services with Laurie Jersey, AIA Architect. Mr. Schrader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. L.L. Jersey Architect has been requested to provide professional services for the design, bidding, and construction of a tornado safe room project at the city campground. Contract provides the needed disciplines required for the project, including structural, civil, mechanical, and electrical engineering and architectural services. Design of the building would begin in 2025 with the project ready for bidding in June of, that'd be 2026. Services not included in this contract consist of design and construction phase services for geotechnical work and materials testing. There also is additional funds that would be needed for a peer review that's required through the project grant. Costs lump sum fee of $48,990. And staff does recommend approval of this agreement for that lump sum fee of $48,990. Authorize the mayor to sign on their behalf. I would like to mention, Mark Genegas in our office has done a lot of work on putting this together and getting this grant approved. Kind of reminder, this total project cost is roughly $600,000, with 81,000 of that being the city share.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer. Second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion. Anybody know who I should address this?
What have we done in the past, out there, if there's been a tornado?
I tail it out of there?
Yeah, I just wondered if the bathrooms.
No, the bathrooms are not.
Is blocked, but it has a, a wood roof. So really, it's, it'll withstand some wind, but it's not made for a tornado shelter.
I mean, I, this is, this just isn't even optional. This is just something we have to do. I feel like it's important. So glad to see what happens.
Okay. All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Action to approve agreement 202428 Fuel Tax Funds Financial Assistance Agreement AP 0037 2024 to 2024 with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor and Council. The airport completed updates on equipment. That's an information sign at the airport. The equipment assists airplanes with navigation. City staff requests to be reimbursed for these improvements from the South Dakota Department of Transportation Fuel Tax Fund. The attached agreement reimburses the city $4,280. And we're asking you to approve this and authorize the mayor to sign. and we're asking you to approve this and authorize the mayor to sign.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldammer. Further discussion? Anybody else wish to address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Approve Agreement twenty, twenty-four, twenty-nine, there is a misprint, that says MCL, but it's MLC, addition of special assessment with SPN Associates, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council, SPN and Associates has been requested by the city to complete a special assessment role and provide construction engineering services. The city will complete an assessment for curb and gutter, asphalt surfacing, and related concrete work, further developers agreement with Muller Lumber Company, that was approved at the August seventh, twenty, twenty-three council meeting. SPN will provide the assessment role, cost breakout spreadsheet, and appropriate professional engineering support for the project. Staff recommends city council approval of the attached agreement with SPN, the amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. I can answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Sabers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bathke.
Yeah.
Okay, further discussion? Anybody else wish to address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Public hearing for wastewater treatment facility phase two additional funds request, Mr. Schrader.
Yes, so with that, we will open the public hearing for the Mitchell Wastewater Treatment Facility project. The city of Mitchell is seeking up to thirteen million of additional funding from the Board of Water and Natural Resources to make improvements to the city's wastewater treatment facility. The funds could be either a grant from the state Consolidated Water Facilities Construction Program, or a loan from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. The expected clean water SRF loan terms are three point seven five percent for thirty years, and the Board of Water and Natural Resources may forgive all or a portion of the loan principal. The amount of funds, source of funds, and terms will be determined by the Board of Water and Natural Resources when the application is presented at a scheduled board meeting. With that, I will open it up to any questions from the public at this time.
For me? Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Pat, explain the part about that some of this may be forgiven.
So, as you're familiar with our other SRF loans, the state has the ability to provide grants or forgive a part of that interest on the loan.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I misunderstood.
Sure.
So at this point, Joe, we, we're not anticipating getting anything, and we built it into our rates that, that's already, we did not take this into account, would that be a true statement?
So there's, there's two parts to this loan. One part being the soybean plant, which we approved our agreement at the last meeting for a repayment for their share of the project. So initially, when we had our initial loan, those improvements were not included. So this incorporates the soybean plant's portion of, of the project. We have them repaying that portion of the project. We also thought the project was gonna come in, and later in the meeting we have the bid award. Project came in under what we anticipated, so when we did the application for the initial, for this initial loan, we expected the cost to be higher. Right now, we're looking at one point two million of that being responsible from the city, and before it was gonna be roughly half and half, soybean plant and the city. So now, since we're only looking at one point two million, we're, the plan is to reduce this loan, so the city pays cash, and we're actually not a part of this loan or needing to increase our rates for this loan. Since there are no questions from the public, we will close the public hearing, and then we can go into the resolution.
Action to approve wastewater treatment facility phase two additional funds request resolution twenty, twenty-four, thirty-eight authorizing application to South, State of South Dakota State Revolving Fund.
Yep.
Mr. Schrader, you're back on.
Yes, sir. So basically, we talked through everything, the loan amount is for thirteen million at three point seven five percent over thirty years. At this point, we do not intend to borrow any money from the city, we plan to use our enterprise fund with revenue that's generated from our fees, our water and sewer fee, or it'd be our sewer fees, sewer portion of the fees. So with that, we do recommend that you approve the resolution, and I can answer any questions you may have. You can see in the staff report, I have a total project cost of roughly thirty-nine million. We talked about where our revenue sources are coming, and with that shortfall, it's roughly one point two million that the city wouldn't, or we're still short that I plan to pay out of the enterprise fund, and that's with a five percent contingency on the project.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Barrington.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Charks, further discussion? Anybody else wish to address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Bid award for South Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase Two, Project twenty, twenty-two, oh one, Mr. Schrader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, bids were opened on May thirtieth, twenty, twenty-four, NCO Council Chambers at one thirty. Two bids were received for bid Schedule A, with the low bidder being John T. Jones Construction Company, base bid of thirty million, thirty-six thousand dollars. Alternates were, we did have a north plant, earth and equalization basin, which would allow us to handle storms in excess when we would have to discharge to the creek. This would almost essentially eliminate that possibility, that alternate one was nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred. Then the other alternate was between a permanent or portable generator, and the permanent generator was cheaper, so we chose to move forward with that option. It is under the engineers' estimate, but over what we had originally budgeted, and I'll, I'll explain that here in a bit. Three bids were received as for bid Schedule B, with the low being from First Rate Excavate Inc. for six hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars, and that is for the soybean plant's portion of the force main. Gabe Lobber is a professional engineer with HDR, he reviewed the bids and assured they were complete and correct. He recommends awarding bid Schedule A to John T. Jones Construction Company for base bid alternate one and alternate three, for a total cost of thirty-one million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We also are recommending awarding bid Schedule B to First Rate Excavate for a total cost of six hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, with both of these bids being contingent on DA and R approval and the availability of additional Like I said, as, as we thought we were going to be over our original budget, that's why we had that additional loan, like I said previously. With what the soybean plant will be covering for their share, our shortfall is roughly one point two million, which we plan to pay, pay out of our enterprise fund. So with that, I recommend approval with the motion as stated. I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Sabers. Second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion? Anybody else wish to address this? Okay, all those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carries. Action to approve resolution R-20, twenty-four, forty, Platte tracks one, two, three, and four in Lot one A, Block C of Westview Edition Southeast Quarter of Section Twenty Township one oh three North Range sixty west of the fifth primary in the city of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota, Mr. Jennings.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this six zero with one absent. The applicant would like to subdivide their existing parcel into four lots, she would like to make them into contractor storage yards to be able to either rent out or sell them to individuals. This is Zone TWC, the lot sizes do fit the requirement for lot width and lot area. Development on this area will also require drainage plan, which if even only one is done, will require it for the whole, all four lots, because we'll know they'll get developed, and that'll be with the building permit process. Can I answer any questions that you may have?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McArdle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers, further discussion? Anybody else wish to address this? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Action to approve resolution R-20, twenty-four, forty-one, Platte of Lot A B Block one of Lake Ridge Edition Subdivision, erected track number one of the northwest quarter, Section ten Township one oh three North Range sixty west of the fifth primary in the city of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota, Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this six zero with one absent. This does follow the master plan in the area, the only difference is they're combining Lot A and, proposed Lot A and B into one lot in that location instead. I did receive it'll be a single-family dwelling on this location, I saw the building plans today for it. I can answer any questions you have for me.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington, further discussion? Anybody else wish to address this one? All those favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. Public hearing on creation of Davis County Regional Railroad Authority, Ms. Alai.
Mayor and Council, this is the public, excuse me, this time is set aside for the public hearing on the creation of the Regional Railroad Authority. We do have, Toby Morris is here to answer any questions that the public or council may have. A rail authority is created when two political subdivisions create an agreement to form the railroad authority. The purpose of this rail authority is to promote and develop industries that utilize rail for their business. The regional rail authority would have the ability to own and operate rail lines, apply for grants and loans from the state, as well as the federal government, and act as a conduit for industry located along a rail line to obtain low-interest loans and grants. The creation of the rail authority would give the city of Mitchell and Davidson County another economic development tool to compete with other areas when recruiting new industries that utilize rail, as well as help current businesses in the area if necessary. The Davidson County Commission also held a public hearing on the creation of the Joint Railroad, their hearing was held on June eleventh, so we can start the public hearing now, for any public comment.
You want to speak, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, my name's Steve Simpson, I do have a handout that I'd like to pass around. While that's going around, I'll explain it, the main body of my presentation's four pages, then I have Appendix one, which is one page, or two pages, excuse me, and then the second appendix is three pages. So I would want to inquire with Mayor Everson, will I have enough time to go through this, or shall I scale back? Go for it.
Go for it, it's a public hearing, so you've got the time.
I appreciate that.
Unless you want me to give you three minutes on the clock.
That probably won't be possible, but this is a complicated issue, and so that's why I provided my testimony in writing to hopefully make this more understandable. The name of my testimony is "We Are Being Railroaded," and this is not a question, this is a statement. I will start out by saying that the speed with which lines were built and the railroad builders disregard for anything that stood in a way of, quote, "progress," unquote, inspired the term, quote, "to railroad," unquote, by the eighteen seventies. So that's where the term "being railroad" originated. Today, the idea of progress is often called economic development. Toby Morris, former economic development staffer under the Jankel and Rounds administrations, is helping set up a railroad authority in Davidson County. The Mitchell Republic quoted Morris, quote, he said, "Having the authority is an economic development asset that will allow the county to access low-interest funds or grants to support further development along the line." Note, Davidson County already has a rail authority, and this is where I'll send you to Appendix two. Okay, Appendix two, MRC, the Current Rail Authority for Davidson County. And this is where I first learned about rail authorities, and I've been spending some time researching that. This was back in September twenty-eighth, twenty, twenty-three edition of the South Dakota Daily Mail, the Plankton Paper. I'm just gonna read the yellow portions of this appendix, the rest of it is there for context, for you to understand where I'm coming from. The Mitchell to Rapid City Rail Authority, that's what we get the word MRC from, is now down to only three members, Aurora, Davidson, and Brule Counties. Less than half of its members after the withdrawal of Pennington, Jackson, Jones, and Lyman Counties. A five-hundred-million-dollar project, High Plains Soybean Processing Plant, to be located two miles off of Mitchell, is on the fast track for development. One of the earliest needs of the project is to build an eighteen-million-dollar transloading facility on the site, allowing it to connect to the Bridleton Northern Rail Line to ship out byproduct from the plant. Chairman of the MRC, John Claggett, also a Davidson County Commissioner, along with Aurora County's MRC Representative, Stan Johnson, met with Aurora County Commission at its September twenty-first meeting to go over the eighteen-million-dollar loan proposal for which the MRC would be the conduit. Aurora County Commissioner, Chairman Clyde Defleson, I think I butchered his name, but that's right. Is that, is that right? Thank you. Told Mr. Claggett, "The commission is really in the dark about the role the MRC will be playing in the proposed transloading facility loan." And I put in there, this is an example of lack of transparency, which is, I'll address some more. Claggett said, "The project has been on a really short timeline, so in other words, they're trying to railroad this thing." Addressing Mr. Claggett, Commissioner JB Studeni said, "The MRC Board will be involved in the loan process, and you've done all the negotiating on behalf of that board, with sometimes other board members not even knowing what's going on." And Mr. Claggett said, "Yep." Okay, I'll go to page two of that appendix, the second paragraph in yellow. After speaking with the egg-coated grain of Plankton's owner, Jim Page, who told him they have contracts with other facilities, Commissioner Studeni reported, Jim said, "Within the Midwest states region, there are ten soybean processing plants, either in the planning stages or under construction." Commissioner Studeni asked, "How viable is this Mitchell project?" Commissioner Studeni responded, "It's eighteen million dollars that our three counties, three relatively small population counties, are going to be on the hook for." And Mr. Claggett replied, "We aren't on the hook, it's called a loan, that's their term." Commissioner Studeni said, "Well, we are underwriting the loan." Mr. Claggett responded, "No, we're not writing a check, the money comes from peer." I think it's stupid to have the wording "loan" in there, but that's what they've got. Commissioner Studeni said, "The state can't loan to a private industry, and the MRC will be on that signature, of which Aurora County is a member." Mr. Claggett said, "The liability is not there." Chairman Clyde Defleson said, "Our concern is our constituents," this is very important, "our constituents, that's a lot of money, and if that loan goes down, what's it gonna do to our county?" Mr. Claggett said again, "No, no, we aren't running a check for it, we're not on the hook for it." Next, I'll go on to the October fifth to twenty, twenty-three edition of the South Dakota Daily Mail, and it says, "At a special meeting of the Aurora County Commission last Thursday, the board voted unanimously by resolution to request to withdraw its membership from the Mitchell to Rapid City MRC Regional Rail Authority. Rochelle Morrow's reasons, gave reasons for withdrawal citing 'due to lack of trust amongst the Aurora County Commissioners and the Chairman of the MRC Board of Commissions, as well as the potential for substantial liability of proposed loans that could be relatively insubstantial benefit to Aurora County.'" Aurora County Commissioner, Chairman Clyde Defleson, reported to his board that after Ringnet and Western General Manager Ryan Yanez contacted the South Dakota Department of Transportation Rail and Transit Manager Jack Dawkins for some clarifications after the last meeting, Mr. Dawkins said, "The MRC will be liable for the repayment of a loan if it would go into default." This is the most important part of this issue for the city council to understand, that if we go and set up this authority and it barrels eighteen million dollars and it doesn't get paid back, you have the tax authority through that authority to levy against your citizens of this city and this county. So, I'm back to page one of my main presentation, in the, in the middle, in the red, it is, is this railroad... this railroad authority really about economic development? Or is it about transferring high risk to the public sector? Or is it actually about adding profits for the gain of using the funds?" Now, I'm going to run back to Appendix 2 again on Page 3, because here we will learn, what is the risk to this city if we go along with this plan? I got excerpts from the March 24th, 2024 report of Coal Bank titled, "Rapid Expansion of Soybean Crush Capacity Risks Exceeding Growth of Renewable Diesel." It says, "Overbuilding U.S. soybean crush capacity combined with sustained levels of low processing margins could threaten the viability of a new high-cost plants in the long term." Now, this is from March of this year. Also, in a book that I found called Barron's Money, Power, and the Corruption of America's Food Industry, two cargos more recent investments have been in lab-grown meat and insect farming. If the cost of growing cells into muscle meat ever dips low enough, it could cut into or even eliminate cargos slaughtering businesses. Similar insect farming could undermine its massive soybean milling operation used to produce animal feed. Cargos pursuing both ventures as a sort of a hedging strategy." So there's two risks to the soybean plant. And a third book I would like to talk about, and they took the word "control," the last two letters of O L, and the first two letters oligarchs, O L, and this book is subtitled, "Exposing the Billionaire Class, Their Secret Deals, and the Globalist Plot to Dominate Your Life." The United Nations, the World Economic Forum, Bill Gates, other ideological aligned climate capitalists decided to take their environmentally friendly food offerings a step further. They began pushing insect-based foods. A 2013, this is 11 years ago, 2013, 201 page UN report entitled, "Edible Insects: Future Prospects for Food and Feed Security," concluded that more conventional protein farming such as beef, pork, poultry, and dairy will destroy the planet and must be replaced by alternative insect-based proteins. So if we're going to follow the global's agenda, what will this look like in South Dakota in our ag industry? In conclusion, I will say that Davidson County Commissioner, John Claggett, a longtime board member of the Chamber of Commerce, tried to railroad the $18 million low-interest loan to the existing MRC Authority claiming it was not a loan. Aurora County Commission did not buy that and learned that their constituents indeed would be on the hook if the soybean plant defaults on anti-payments. So Aurora County wanted out, and that is why, the only reason why a new rail authority is being pursued. The Mitchell City Council needs to stand up for the average citizen of the city and not allow the Mitchell Chamber of Commerce and Planning and Development District 3, run by non-elected bureaucrats, who are implementing a globalist agenda from diverting liabilities and risks from a private corporation and have those placed on the citizens of Davidson County. Now, the middle part of my presentation is a lot of history and detail, and I'm not going to go through it all. I will instead, out of respect for your time, just say that, based my research, the railroad authorities were created in South Dakota in 1980 because they were being put out of business by trucking companies due to the interstate systems that the federal government put in. So the purpose behind the railroad authorities was to save the railroads, not to help a shipper soybean processing access it. It's just like us, we have a house, how do we get to the street? A driveway. Who pays for that driveway? We do. So a second point that I would like to make is that the UN Charter had this intergovernmental Section 8 in it, and Congress in 1966 and 1968 passed two laws that created intergovernmental mechanism, and that includes the six planning districts in South Dakota. And the idea is then the globalists would use the federal money to control local governments through district planning entities. I will jump now to my conclusion of my presentation. On the back of Page 4, conclusion, don't be railroaded by the false agenda of economic development. This is not about economic development, but about those who want to control the economy through control of our elected officials. We're being fooled into thinking we need federal money to survive, money which can only be obtained by agreeing to be controlled by regional government where representation of the people is greatly diminished, if not outright lost. In our case, that would be the Planning and Development District 3 in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. In a 2014 study, a multivariate analysis indicates that economic elites and organized groups representing business interests have substantial independent impact on U.S. government policy while average citizens and mass-based interest groups have little or no independent influence. So are you going to side with the economic elites and approve this authority and appoint three members who are connected to the chamber? Or are you going to follow the lead of the Aurora County Commission, who stood up and protected the constituents and said no to this resolution? Thank you.
Thank you. Here, Mr. Claggett.
Hello, John Claggett here. Steve and I see each other almost every week, so I've heard some of that. You are not being railroaded. Let me say that first. Second, I want to tell you that I'm chairing the MRC right now, just started this last year, and I did what all of you would do when you are chairing. I read through all of the records that set up the corporation, all of the tenants of that. That was done in 1978. I read it through, and in bold print, it says, "You are not liable for any transactions in any of the counties." Okay? So that's what I was making my stand on. Then I turned around and later on, after talking with the governor's staff on economic development, et cetera, talking with DOT, because both of those entities come into play, I did find out that we were so-called liable. Now, that liability is more of a bondability to handle something if there's an issue. Okay. I will tell you, in all those years this has been going on, they've never had this issue that you would have to pay back. And the reason I want to say that is because sometimes in the conversation, they talk about $18 million. Well, yeah, $18 million, it's a loan. And the reason I want to explain that is it's different than getting some federal dollars which know, with really no hangs to it. The loan system is the one that GOED uses, and the reason they use it is they can get that loan to the prospective builder, then they get a better interest rate. That's what this is all about. There's no hocus pocus, there's no magic here. So they get a better interest rate than they would be in a commercial market. That's what the governor's office does. The rail authority then usually, and this isn't established yet, usually gets a small percentage of that to be able to function. Their function, too, is to move that money eventually into economic development of other rail associates. So what it is, we get no money, so to speak, other than the money that channels through and goes out the other end for economic development. It's a great tool. Stephanie knows, you know, in Brookings, in that Brookings area, they've got the same type of setup. The reason we're doing this right now is to separate ourselves from MRC. And the reason I'm saying that is because right now, we've got our annual meeting coming up next week, and we'll be down to two different counties. Okay? Davidson County, we're up and ready to roll, but the other counties, and this has happened over the years, don't want to be liable. Okay? If you don't want to play, you don't want to play. So we want Davidson County and Mitchell to join together and be a force to make this thing happen. This dollar is, just so you know, is the $18 million is the loop, and the loop is their functional piece for the tie-in from the plant to rail. So it's a very easy system to look at. There is no conspiracy working here. The whole point is, we need to play what GOED is doing. They want to make this happen. Okay? Also, this is vetted out by GOED, and it's vetted out by DOT. So just wanted to kind of get that straightened out. I know Toby's here, he's got maybe some more information on that, but I need to straighten this out to let you know, there isn't goofy stuff going on. The whole point is, smaller counties are too fearful. They can't move forward. We need to move forward. I would take any other questions and fill in the blanks if you need.
Why'd Aurora County back out?
Which one?
Why'd Aurora County back out?
Same type of thing. When this was presented to us, and again, it came to me and I read the stuff that we aren't liable, I thought, oh, fine, we aren't liable. That was the edict, and that was the signed papers by Alice Kundert when she was Secretary of State. And so, okay, I thought, okay, that's no problem, I'd be happy to do that. Well, then I find out later on, that was changed, and it wasn't changed in our books. So, okay, I dealt with what I thought was right. So then when I did find out after the conversation, that's when we had to turn around and say, okay, small counties do not have the gravitas to do it. That's just where it's at in this world. The smaller counties can receive some federal funds, and that's the reason that they've, in a sense, survived. So hopefully that helps clear it up, and we're ready to go. We got a plant we're building.
Mayor and Council, I do have some just general comments on the proposal, but I don't know if you want to get through the public hearing and take any other more public comments first?
Yes, one only.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anybody else have? Yes.
Can you respond briefly to what John said?
Briefly.
And thank you, John, for your clarification. We're talking an $18 million loan at 2% versus soybean processors of South Dakota getting the loan from their bank at 8%. That's a difference of 6% on $18 million. We're talking a million dollars roughly for first year. They made $70 million last year operating two soybean processing plants in Volga and Miller. They got the money to pay the interest. Why do we want to take on the risk? They should bear the risk because they're going to be achieving the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this? Mr. Morris, did you want to say anything? Yes, or you want to?
I think I'll have a question for him on council discussion, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, then we can close the hearing. Action approved transfer, whoops, sorry, went the wrong one. Action approved resolution authorizing agreement to create the Davidson County Regional Rail Authority, appointing initial members, and authorizing execution thereof. It is Resolution R 202442. All right, Ms. Aline.
Okay, I just wanted to start with a first, just a couple of quick comments. When Davidson County originally brought this proposal to, actually, I went to, I think, the mayor and some council members first, at least in our discussions, what made sense is, you know, we've just heard at the beginning of the meeting how we have really prepared ourselves for future growth and development, and if we're going to be having any more industries come to town, it makes sense that Davidson County and the city of Mitchell are working together with whatever incentives that we can to help bring those businesses to town. I really think it's important that when we're talking about the creation of this authority, we don't say it's just for one industry. Granted, there might be, there's a previous request that went to the other rail authority, but I think there's also going to be future requests, hopefully, if the community continues to grow and develop. I will ask Toby a question, if you want to come up Toby, too. I also wanted to just say to the council and general public, it would be my intention that if the city does approve the resolution as Davidson County did, we would publish all notices and agendas and minutes on our website so they're easily accessible to anyone who wants to find them. I did kind of hear that in Steve's testimony that, you know, you want to be able to get that information to you in a transparent way, so we'll make sure we do that. Just looking at all my notes here that I was trying to make. I did ask Toby about really, for as long as we've had railroad authorities in the state of South Dakota, what's the history kind of been? If we've had any foreclosures? Someone brought up, I think it was John, that I had experience with two different rail authorities. We had one with Volga and one with Aurora in Brookings County. So again, I just think the partnership with Davidson County and the city of Mitchell is good. That's all I wanted to point out, and that we would be putting all the information, like our other boards, on our website so anyone interested could get the information. The other question I had besides the liability was the vetting of the financial information on any of the loan applications. This is Toby Morris, he's with Collier.
Thanks, Stephanie, members of the commission, Mayor. You probably remember me from a couple of years past as I've been in front of you. I'm a registered municipal advisor. What does that mean? I work for the governments when it comes to advising for the governments. What you have before you is a political subdivision that's created when two governments come together. By way of background, maybe, I just want to give you a little bit of history. I never thought when I turned 50 last week I could recite 30 years of history with the rails, so I'm getting there. I'm getting with you, Mr. John, we're getting there. The rail authorities, they're a conduit, is what they are, and it's a way to access on the federal money side. If you go and you look at the history of the MRC, the MRC stands for Mitchell to Rapid City, and that is really the old Dakota Southern Line. Well, that stood stagnant for years. It was storage, it had a bunch of weeds on it until about 2010, when what we call the Tiger Grant was approved by the state. At that time, it was a resurrection of the MRC line, and the MRC line's really purpose was the line. They said, after, you know, being at meetings since really in 2008 and 9, their job was to ensure that there was a line available. That way, if local counties wanted to recruit industry, they would do it on an individual basis. So when we, I was part of the development group in Kimball with the gavel on, we called it Liberty Grain at that time. You'll see that it's not just registered for grain. There's 19 districts, or 19 authorities within the state of that roughly 11 are active. One of the last ones created, we did it about four years ago, was in Belle Fouch, and that was the end recipient of that turned out to be the ramen noodle plant now that has moved in the Belle, creating about 150, 200 jobs. Rail's one of our most underutilized assets that you see. I could really go into the weeds and talk about how important what I'm going to call that Dakota Southern Line is, and really, the epicenter of that line is right here in Mitchell where it comes into the switch where it hooks up to the BM. When Governor Janklow bought that, and then, more importantly, when Governor Rounds sold it in 2005, there was what's called trackage and haulage rights. We've yet to figure out how to crack the code, but essentially this, if you go now and you go on that short line, you're sort of beholden to the Burlington Northern, but you can also go down to Sioux City and access the CP, the Union, there's just a host of it. So the more competition you have for transportation, the more desire there is, because grain is all about transportation, it's movement and shuttling. We've seen the activity that's happened going to the west. Since the MRC line has been developed, there's been well over 150, 200 million of development. It's not just grain, though. You have the box company that sits there right there at the switch. You have Poet. We developed the rail down in Yankton, if you've seen down there when the elevator went in. Not only that, Dakota protein went in, and it just goes on. Now, is it a conduit to access? Yes. Does it still require financial responsibility? Absolutely. To the opponent who spoke earlier about the company being profitable, that's the kind of people I want to lend to. I don't really want to lend to the nonprofitable ones, I want to be a successful one. And not only that, what I like to do, and I'm a homegrown South Dakotan like the rest of us, I want of us, I want to lend to somebody that keeps the dividends right here in the state. How many thousands of users does the soybean? How many thousands of investors at Poet and so forth? So we can sit with twenty million in the state coffers, but does that really help us out here, as it produces a higher basis for the soybeans, produces dividends back into the investors? I could go on and on and on, but ultimately, it's this. Any loans that are ever approved that go through the board, it is transparent. If I'm working for the board as a municipal advisor, who give advice, everything from the Newell School District up to the governor's office to the City of Mitchell when it comes to borrowing money, we make sure the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. And I'm going to step back for one time and say, if a bad situation happens, remember who the lender is. Most lenders, regulated lenders, don't have a sense of humor because they have examiners. The lender on this is the state of South Dakota. There was an incident about twenty years ago up in Roscoe, South Dakota, where nothing all plant blew up. They had a loan out, about three million dollars. What did the state do? They stepped in and they basically said, we're putting your payments on moratorium. They allowed the company to get up and running, and when they did get up and running, they never assessed them any of the crude interest. That's the partnerships we do in South Dakota, and that's where we look at, who's the ultimate borrower, who's the ultimate lender? And so I could take questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Morrison?
So I just, why do they need to borrow eighteen million?
In the economy that we're in right now, we're not seeing a forgiveness of rates coming up. We're seeing a lot of volatility, we're seeing inflation. It's really a way to hedge unnecessary costs, and if you can save six percent, you know, my spur of the spark math on twenty million would say that's one point two million a year. That is significant amount that benefits here. We're not subsidizing Cargill, we're not subsidizing ADM, and it's, to me, it's that local, and that's when I looked at it from that standpoint, so. It's a hedge to ensure future profitability, future success.
Tonight's vote is just on the authority.
Creation of the authority, correct. This resolution will be the next action, so it's authorizing the agreement between the City of Mitchell and Davison County, authorizing the officers to carry out the intent of the resolution, and then also designating three people to represent the city on that joint board. And then the three people listed are Jeff Smith, City Councilor Jeff Smith, City Councilor Mike Bathke, and then MADC Representative Mike Laritzen.
I could just expand. Regardless, it's not necessary about the loan. Take Belle Fouch. Because they had an authority, the authority was able to apply to the state, and they ended up receiving, I want to say, one point five or two million dollars to put in the siding that was eventually used, grant, not a loan, but a grant, that was eventually used for the siding for the ramen noodles. Again, it's a tool in the toolbox, is really what it comes down to. It's always transparent, and the officials on the board always have the final say.
Okay. Anything else? So we're looking for a motion on the resolution.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mrs. Chark, further discussion. Further discussion from the audience. Come on up, Mr. Simpson.
Like I said in my presentation earlier, we already have a rail authority. If we need to fix the railroad so that people can keep using it, we already have the authority, we don't need another one. Number two, we just approved a water treatment for High Plains, and they got almost a twenty-two million dollar TIF from the county. If we don't approve this, are they going to walk? No, they're not going to walk over an extra cost of a little over a million dollars a year in interest. No, this isn't. And lastly, railroad authorities were never designed as economic development tools. They were designed to make sure that we had the capability of moving product from one place to another. And back in the nineteen seventies, late seventies, when they were going broke, they were concerned about getting coal from the coal mines in Wisconsin to Big Stone. That was the reason why the federal government stepped in and made the state of South Dakota do this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all those favor the motion, say a five percent, aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Action to approve transfer of entitlements in the amount of two, excuse me, two hundred sixty thousand to the state of South Dakota Department of Transportation to authorize contingency funds for the city's contribution. Mr. Schrader?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. This request is for approval of the mayor and city attorney to sign the FA agreement for transfer of entitlements. Mitchell has planned for pavement maintenance in 2024, which will be cost shared with the state. City shares estimated to be under fifteen thousand, require contingency funds, as it was not budgeted for this year. So staff recommends approval to authorize the mayor to sign, as well as city attorney. I can answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McArdle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, further discussion. Anybody, are you supposed to address this? All those favor the motion, say a five percent, aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Hearing in first reading, an order, it's O 202405, rezoning of Lot 7A and lots eight through twelve in the north half of Vacant Railroad right-of-way line south of adjacent and adjacent to said lots and west half of Vacated Langdon Street, all in Block 16, DA Scott's First Edition City of Mitchell, Davison County, South Dakota, north of thirteen point six feet of lots one through six, Block 1, and west half of Vacated Langdon Street, south half of Vacant Railroad right-of-way, lying north and adjacent to said lots, and west half of Vacated Langdon Street, MH Rowley's First Edition City of Mitchell, Davison County, South Dakota, lots A, B, and C, Block 1, MH Rowley's First Edition City of Mitchell, Davison County, South Dakota, west twelve point one nine feet, and south one hundred fifty-three point five feet of Lot 4, and east thirteen feet, and south one hundred fifty-three point five feet of Lot 5, Block 1, MH Rowley's First Edition City of Mitchell, Davison County, South Dakota, from R 2, single family, to TWC Transportation Warehouse and Commercial District.
Mr. Jennings, that's a lot to say in one.
Well, wanted you to go out with a nice one and bring Jordan in with a nice one.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this, six zero with one absent. It was published in the paper, neighbors were notified, sign was posted for this. There were three letters in favor that made the packet, one letter that did not make the packet, but it was also in favor of this rezon. There were no comments, so I did not pass that out to you at all this evening. As you are well aware, Muth Electric is moving locations to the old Campbell's or Runnings Building, and so they're looking to put this up for sale, and Realtor called me and asked what the zoning is there. It's zoned R 2. Looking back at previous maps from the previous years, there's TWC and R 2 on three or four different maps for this same location. Building permits have some as R 2, some as TWC, some as something else, so it's kind of been a gray area. In 2012, we recodified the zoning map, and that's when it became R 2 is what we have to follow right now. Pitts Corporation is in the same boat, they're not moving right now, so I'm not saying that they are doing that, but they are also zoned R 2 from that 2012 recodification of our zoning map. Our comprehensive plan has this as transportation, heavy commercial transportation warehousing utilities. You should follow your comprehensive plan with your zoning, or your zoning should follow your comprehensive plan, that's what we have that for. So they're not trying to do anything new in this location, it's really more housekeeping and cleaning up, something that was probably an oversight on a lot of different codified maps that we've had in the past. I can answer any questions you have for me. Both applicants are available for any questions that you have for them as well.
This was formerly a railroad area. I think prior to 2012, it was TWC, and somehow it got.
Yeah. Half of them, the map on the south was TWC or R 2, and even Pitts Corp, I looked at four or five different ones, and each one had a different zoning district for all of them. So.
Fell through the cracks back when we redid the zoning in 2012, so.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabres, further discussion. Anybody, are you supposed to address this? All those favor the motion, say a five percent, aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Quick, before we go into executive session, I just want to say thank you to council for all you've done the last six years. It's been a pleasure serving the City of Mitchell. I think we've worked well together. I also want to thank my department heads, as well as the city staff, for all they've done for me the last six years. I appreciate all the work you guys put forward and helped move Mitchell forward, since this is my last meet. Thank you very much. With that, a little entertaining motion to enter into executive session for South Dakota codified law 12523 legal.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Chark, second by Mr. Barrington, discussion. All those favor the motion, say a five percent, aye?
Aye.
Close nay? There will be no action after. Close nay. There will be no action after.